Thank you. First on the agenda this evening, we have a proclamation for Juneteenth, which is June 19th, 2021, and we have Mr. Fred Brown with the Marion Civil Rights Commission here to accept the proclamation. I'll come down front. If you'd like to come up, please. And I learned this evening that Juneteenth has been declared a national holiday. Okay, whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st, 1863, declaring that slaves in the Confederate territory free, paving the way for the passing of the 13th Amendment, which abolished slavery in the United States of America, and whereas word about the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation was delayed two and a half years in reaching African Americans in the South and southwestern United States, and whereas many slave owners continued to hold their slaves captive after the announcement and up to June 19th, 1865, and whereas June 19th became a symbolic date representing African American freedom and has a special meaning to African Americans, and whereas it is called Juneteenth, combining the words of June and 19th, and has been celebrated by the African American community for over 150 years, and whereas it is a day meant to educate and reflect. Now therefore, I Nicholas Abu Asali, Mayor of the City of Marion, Iowa, do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2021 as Juneteenth in the City of Marion, Iowa, and encourage all residents to become more aware of the significance of this celebration in African American history and in the heritage of our nation and city. And I'd like, I'd like thank Fred for his work on the Civil Rights Commission. He's a great member of that commission, so thank you for all your work. Okay, next on the agenda is a public forum, which is a time set aside for comments for the members of the public on topics that are listed on the agenda but not associated with the public hearing. Anyone who would like to address the council can email the city clerk at this time, or have we had anyone who's asked in advance to address the council?
I have not received any comments.
Okay. Then we'll proceed with the consent agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to approve the consent agenda as follows. Items A1 through F2, Resolutions 29600 through 29623.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented, including items A1 through F2, Resolutions 29600 through 29623. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. For the next portion of the agenda, I'll turn over the meeting to Mayor Pro Tem.
Mayor Pro Tem, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abu Asli's abstention as follows. Items B1 through F3, Resolutions 29624 through 29629.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abu Asli's abstention. Items B1 through F3, Resolutions 29624 through 29629. Questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes with one abstention. Pass it back to the mayor.
Thank you. Onto the regular agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of the June 2nd, 2021 City Council Meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the June 2nd, 2021 City Council Meeting. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, move to, or move for the motion to approve a Hold Harmless Agreement with Cocktails and Company regarding an outdoor concert for the Andy Frasco Show on June 18th, 2021, Cocktails and Company.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Hold Harmless Agreement with Cocktails and Company regarding an outdoor concert for the Andy Frasco Show on June 18th, 2021. Discussion? I know in the past there have been issues with security in, with that location, and I saw that they have private security for this, for this event. Is that satisfactory to our police chief? Want to speak into the mic, please? Yeah, thanks a lot.
Yes, sir. I spoke to Mr. Evans, the owner. He's gonna have six bouncers. He has made it a smaller outdoor area. The band is geared towards people in their 40s and 50s. It's like a wedding-type band. He isn't expecting any problems, and I'm gonna go with, with his judgment on this one. We had a pretty long talk about what happened in the past, and he assured me that that was not gonna happen again.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution Number 29630, approving fiscal year 2020, 2021 capital budget transfers in the amount of $2,225,000.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 29630, approving the fiscal year 2020, 2021 capital budget transfers in the amount of $2,225,000. Discussion? All those in favor of Resolution 29630, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution Number 29631, approving fiscal year 2020, 2021 special revenue transfers in the amount of $2,799.26.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 29631, approving the fiscal year 2020, 2021 special revenue transfers in the amount of $2,799.26. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 29632, approving the proposed allocation of the Hotel Motel funding for fiscal year 21 to 22.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 29632, approving the proposed allocation of the Hotel Motel funding for fiscal year 21, 22. Discussion? All those in favor of Resolution Number 29632, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion's approved.
Your Honor, I move to direct staff to use existing voter-approved lost language for financial planning and development of ballot language for November 2021 elections.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to direct staff to use the existing voter-approved lost local option sales tax language for financial planning and development of ballot language for the November 2021 election. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion's been approved.
Mayor, make the motion to receive, file, and approve a tentative agreement with the local 1937 International Association of Firefighters for the period of July 1, 2021 through June 30th, 2022.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to receive, file, and approve a tentative, tentative agreement with the local 1937 International Association of Firefighters for the period of July 1, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion's approved.
Your Honor, I move to receive, file, and approve tentative agreement with Marion Police Protective Association for the period of July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2024.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to receive, file, and approve a tentative agreement with Marion Police Protective Association for the period July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2024. Discussion? Yes, go ahead, Randy.
Your Honor, thank you. Just a quick question. Maybe City Manager can answer this for us. Lon, has this always been the practice to be, I'm just looking at the difference, the renewals of the contracts are current, however the time periods have moved. Can you just, did the Firefighter Association, you know, the other two, or did the 2024, have those always been under two-year contracts and, or one-year contract, obviously?
The, the length of the agreement can be changed based on the desires of the bargaining unit. So in the case of the police one, they wanted to get it locked up for three years, and after going back and forth quite a bit with fire, they elected to go with a one-year option. Aspen went with a three-year option as well. We do typically see these staggered over time, rather than having them all come together. It's just this time around, they all ended up at the same time.
Sure. Okay, great. Thank you, and I appreciate it.
And what makes that a tentative agreement?
The tentative agreement, both parties have to sign off on the tentative agreement, and then you come together, the final language gets incorporated into the contract, and then each party has to ratify the contract. So these are the terms that would then be put into the contract that comes back to the council to ratify.
Thank you.
Any further discussion or comments? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to receive, file, and approve tentative agreement with local 231 of the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees for the period of July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to receive, file, and approve tentative agreement with the local 231 of the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees for the period of July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2024. Discussion? Your Honor. Go ahead, Grant.
Yeah, this, I think, might be applicable to any other three-year agreement. Is, is there anything that is considered an automatic reopeners for something, any provision to be looked at at an intermediate point in time?
Generally, if you're gonna have to have anything that can be reopened, it has to be spelled out in the contract. The only exception I can think of that might cause that would be is if there's a legislative change, if the legislature changed something in the law and made it effective, but it was inconsistent with the contract. You may have to open the contract during that term.
All right, thank you. My, the basis of my question, Lon, was just on my experience, albeit long ago, with teaching contracts, and there were, I recall that there were reopeners specified, but as you said, that would have to be denoted.
Yeah, and the only other time I can think that I've experienced where that happened, during the middle of a contract, the insurance company with the city that I was with discontinued the insurance product that we had. So even though we were in midterm contract and there was no reopeners, we had to engage in negotiations to come up with replacement.
Thanks.
Any further comments or questions? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 21-10, amending Chapter 99 of the Code of Ordinances related to sanitary sewer by increasing monthly domestic and industrial user charges from $4.10 to $4.39. This is the final consideration.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilmember Brand, seconded by Councilmember or Mayor Pro Tem Atkins, to approve ordinance number 21-10, amending Chapter 99 of the Code of Ordinances relating to sanitary sewer by increasing monthly domestic and industrial user charges from $4.10 to $4.39. Discussion? All those in favor of the final consideration of ordinance number 21-10, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 21-11, amending Chapter 105 of the Code of Ordinances relating to solid waste by establishing base monthly collection fees at $18.75. This is the final consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 21-11, amending Chapter 105 of the Code of Ordinances relating to solid waste by establishing base monthly collection fees at $18.75. Discussion? All those in favor of the final consideration of ordinance number 21-11, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution Number 29633, awarding the contract with Frank's Tree Service for right-of-way stump removal and turf restoration in an amount not to exceed $239,625.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 29633, awarding a contract with Frank's Tree Service for right-of-way stump removal and turf restoration in the amount of, in an amount not to exceed $239,625. Discussion? So I have a question. Since this is not reimbursable by FEMA, where does this come, this money come from then?
So no, it's not reimbursable by FEMA, but I'll guess I'll let Maul kind of speak on to where it's gonna be coming from, because we do have insurance money, I guess, that will cover this.
Oh, good.
We did receive from our insurance carrier $250,000 for debris removal.
Okay, so that'll cover this.
Perfect. Come perfectly under that budget.
That's great. Okay, thank you. Any other questions or discussion on this item? All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 29633, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved, and for the next item, I'll turn over the meeting to the Mayor Pro Tem.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve Resolution Number 29634, approving an agreement, an agreement with Hughes Aerospace Corporation for instrument flight procedure design, navigation services, and maintenance in the amount of $183,075.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 29634, approving an agreement with Hughes Aerospace Corporation for instrument flight procedure design navigation services and maintenance in the amount of $183,075. Discussions or questions? Yes, Grant.
Just a comment, Your Honor. I, just to relate for the record, this is, was reviewed by the Airport Committee and received their endorsement, and hence that's why it's before us at this time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hi, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes with one abstention. I'll hand the meeting back to the mayor.
Thank you.
Your Honor, make a motion to direct staff to establish a target average pavement condition index 60 in regard to the pavement management program.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to direct staff to establish a target, target average pavement condition index of 60 with regard to the pavement management program. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 29635, approving a contract with KTA Tater Incorporated for Quality Assurance Steel Fabrication Inspection for the C-Mar Phase IV project for the City of Marion from the east side of Indian Creek Bridge over Marion Boulevard to Seventh Street, twin continuous welding, welded Gerder Bridge and PCC Trail in the amount of $93,782.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 29635, moving the contract with KTA Tater Inc. for Quality Assurance Steel Fabrication Inspection for the C-Mar Phase IV project in the City of Marion from the east side of Indian Creek Bridge over Marion Boulevard to Seventh Street, twin continuous welder Gerder Bridge and PCC Trail in the amount of $93,782. Discussion? All those in favor of Resolution Number 29635, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to receive, file, and refer to TAC, a request for no parking on 1300 Block of Sixth Street and 600 Block of 13th Avenue.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to receive, file, and refer to the Traffic Advisory Committee, a request for no parking on 1300th Block of Sixth Street and the 600th Block of 13th Avenue. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 29636, approving contract bond with HydroClean LLC regarding the 2021 sanitary CIPP rehabilitation project in the amount of $87,063.87.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 29636, approving contract and bond with HydroClean LLC for the 2021 sanitary CIPP. Is that, let's see if I can remember that. Cured and placed. Is that right? I got it. Rehabilitation project in the amount of $87,063.87. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of Resolution Number 29636, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved. After all these years, I'm learning the acronyms.
Your Honor, I move to receive, file, and refer to TAC, a request to look at the pedestrian access to Toby Park.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to receive, file, and refer to the Traffic Advisory Committee, requests to look at the pedestrian access to Toby Park. This was pursuant to a petition received from the neighborhood. Any discussion on this? Okay, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
I move to approve Resolution Number 29637, approving a contract amendment with Snyder and Associates regarding scope limits to the contract for the 2018 Albernet Road Extension Project Phase 1 in an additional amount of $360,600 for a new contract total not to exceed $824,600.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 29637, approving the contract amendment with Snyder and Associates regarding scope limits to the contract for the 2018 Albernet Road Extension Project Phase 1 in an additional amount of $360,600 for a new contract total not to exceed $824,600. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of Resolution Number 29637, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. It's so good to hear the rain.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 29638, approving change order number two to Peak Construction Group regarding the Marion Library Project, bid package 05B and 06A regarding general trades and miscellaneous steel regarding changing station in the amount of $1,890.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 29638, approving the change order number two to the Peak Construction Group contract regarding the Marion Library Project, bid package 5B and 6A for, regarding general trades and miscellaneous steel regarding changing station in the amount of $1,890. Discussion? All those in favor of Resolution 29638, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution Number 29639, approving change order number 001R to Pearson Wall Systems regarding the Marion Library Project, bid package 09A, gypsum board and acoustics regarding wall for changing station in the amount of $1,959.40.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 29639, approving change order number 1R to Pearson Wall Systems regarding the Marion Library Project, bid package 9A, gypsum board and acoustics for the wall for the changing station in the amount of $1,959.40. Discussion? All those in favor of Resolution Number 29639, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 21-13, amending Chapter 160 of the Code of Ordinances relating to building code. This will be final consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the final consideration of ordinance number 21-14, amending Chapter 161 of the Code of Ordinances. It's been moved and seconded to approve the final consideration of ordinance number twenty-one dash fourteen, amending chapter one sixty-one of the code of ordinances relating to the plumbing code. Discussion? Yes, Renee?
I thought we were on F one.
Oh, I was reading, I'm sorry, you're right. I was reading below that.
For clarity.
Let's, I'll repeat the motion. I was reading the second one up there. The motion is to approve ordinance number twenty-one dash thirteen, amending chapter one sixty of the code of ordinances. Is that correct? Yeah. Relating to the building code, the final consideration. Discussion? Thanks for pointing that out. Okay, all those in favor of approving ordinance number twenty-one dash thirteen, final consideration, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Your honor, I move to approve ordinance number two one dash one four, amending chapter one sixty-one of the code of ordinances relating to the plumbing code. This is our final consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the final consideration of ordinance number twenty-one dash fourteen, amending chapter one sixty-one of the code of ordinances relating to the plumbing code. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of ordinance twenty-one dash fourteen, final consideration, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Your honor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-one dash fifteen, amending chapter one six three of the code of ordinance is relating to the mechanical code. Final consideration.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tem Atkins, seconded by council member Sternad to approve ordinance number twenty-one dash fifteen, amending chapter one sixty-three of the code of ordinances relating to the mechanical code. Discussion? All those in favor of the final consideration, ordinance number twenty-one dash fifteen, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-one dash sixteen, amending chapter one sixty-five of the code of ordinances relating to the housing code. This is the final consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number twenty-one dash sixteen, amending chapter one sixty-five of the code of ordinances relating to the housing code. Discussion? All those in favor of the final consideration of ordinance number twenty-one dash sixteen, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved.
Your honor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-one dash seventeen, amending chapter one fifty-three of the code of ordinances relating to the property maintenance code. Final consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the final consideration of ordinance number twenty-one dash seventeen, amending chapter one fifty-three of the code of ordinances relating to property maintenance. Discussion? All those in favor of the final consideration for ordinance number twenty-one dash seventeen, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-one dash one eight, amending chapter seventy-six of the Marion Code of Ordinances relating to bicycle regulations. This will be the second consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number twenty-one dash eighteen, amending chapter seventy-six of the code of ordinances relating to bicycle regulations. Discussion? All those in favor of ordinance number twenty-one dash eighteen, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. Next on the agenda is a public forum, which is a time set aside for comments from members of the public on any item that is not we, was, did I miss something?
I think we have a discussion of the fireworks on the top of the last page.
Oh, I didn't see that up there, sorry. Under, under other department discussions, we have a discussion regarding fireworks use. Welcome the two chiefs.
Yes, it's the request of the council on Tuesday, an update about the fireworks. Really, the update, we put out another public announcement and media release on the rules out for Marion. We did that today. We also plan on having it published in the Marion Times next Thursday. And as of now, everything, nothing has changed because of COVID over the last year. Nothing has changed. There was legislation in the state legislation, they tried to pass a law that the cities could not prohibit the sale of fireworks in certain zoning areas, but that did not pass. So the law has remained the same. And as of now, we're going with what the council approved in the past, that fireworks can only be used on July fourth from noon to eleven P M. And December thirty-first from six P M. to twelve thirty A M. This is the same as Hiawatha. Lynn County Unincorporated, they do begin at nine A M. on those days. That's the only difference. Yeah, and then Cedar Rapids bans them completely. There is no use of fireworks in the city of Cedar Rapids. So is he, any more information from me on that?
Any questions for either of the chiefs? Yes, go ahead, Renee, and then we'll go with Grant.
Yeah, no, no questions, just thanks. I saw the release come out today. I appreciate you putting it in the paper. I mean, anything we can do that maybe will tamp down, you know, what we know is coming, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
We hope.
Go ahead, Grant.
Yes, just a question, and hopefully we receive a sufficient amount of rain here in the next few days that negates the, even the validity of my question, but do we have any concerns about the dry conditions and fireworks use?
Yes, we had a informal meeting of the Lynn County Fire Chiefs about a burn ban for the county. And we decided to wait until, to see what the weather would do over the weekend, and it is supposed to become cooler. And we are going to convene again next Monday and discuss it again.
Okay. Thank you. Now we'll move on to the public forum, which is a time set aside for members of the public to address the council on any item. Whether it's on the agenda or not, anyone, has anyone asked to address the council?
I do not have any comments.
Okay. Then I would just remind members of the public that they can contact any council member at any time with any questions or requests for information or comments or input on anything. So we're all available to answer questions and to provide information or to help people solve an issue or direct them to the right person within the city that can help them. So we'll move on to council comments. We'll start with Mayor Pro Tem.
I don't have anything today.
Okay, thank you. Randy?
I do, I have nothing either. Thank you.
A question going back to the fireworks. On the screen, those five vendors, were those only five vendors? And is there still time for someone to get, for someone else to come in and when do the sales start?
I'm actually sorry, I forgot I had Rachel add that slide because I figured you'd want to know. Actually, the first year, if you remember, in two thousand and seventeen, we had twenty-two vendors. And then we changed the zoning and went down to three. So this year we have five, and I wanted you to be aware of where they are supposed to be. They can actually apply for a permit to sell up until the fourth. So, but right now, that's the only five we have, and I anticipate that to be the, all we'll have.
When do the sales start?
Sales actually by law could begin June first and June eighth.
Are any of those open?
And sales continue until July thirteenth, even though we can't shoot them off. Yes, they are open, three of them are.
I haven't even noticed them. That's probably a good thing since we put them in those areas, so.
Yep, they're open.
Thank you. Also want to piggyback on what the mayor said a little bit ago about contacting council members. We're starting back up with the, maybe you were going to say something about it, but we're going to start back up
That's fine, go ahead, sure.
With the council office hours, that's going to be at Toby Park for the farmer's market. I believe the mayor will be there this Saturday, right? Okay.
Thank you. Renee?
Thank you. Yeah, I have two things. One, to your comment about reaching out to us, I just wanted to share, I got a letter from Daniel, I can't remember his last name, and I already responded, but he was very upset about the roundabout coming in at tenth and tenth. He thinks we're roundabout happy. Lot of comments related to that and feels like people who disagree can't be heard. And so my response to him, you know, was to attend these meetings. I talked about us being able to allow the public back in, and I encouraged him to come in and share his views. But I told him this was discussed for quite a while, at least a year or two ago, I remember. So I bring this up to not only share, because I did say I would pass this along, but to also, I know we've talked about having a dashboard on our website of like our major projects and timelines, and I just, I don't know where we are with that, but I was hoping to be able to push, you know, to be able to say, here, here's what's forecasted over the next five years, because maybe now that we're getting ready to bust through and extend Albernet, we'll, we'll do our normal thing, but people out there won't know until they see shovels in the ground, and they'll be upset, and we approved it two years ago, that kind of thing. So I just think the, the dashboard and the timeline for major projects, you know, the faster we can get that up and out, and then we can point people to it so that they can anticipate these things and come to us in a more timely fashion, because it's hard to try to assuage his concerns when, when this thing is buttoned up like it is. So just wanted to bring that up. And then my second comment, I wasn't going to say this until you said something about the two chiefs walking up, and it made me think to share with everybody that on the cover of the newest Madden will be Brady and Mahomes sharing that. Just got to start a little NFL talk in June, because it's coming, y'all, it's coming. All right, that's all I got. Thanks.
Well, I see it starts early, doesn't it, Renee? Okay. Get ready for some football. Two comments. One is, I had the opportunity to escort a friend to a doctor's appointment this, this last week. And we took a little bit of a tour of the uptown and the commentary that my friend gave to me is just, was, I think, generally positive relative to the progress on the library, even though they had been seeing it on the, on the video cam that's available from Bush Construction. But they were very impressed with seeing the interior activity that had gone on, as well as just some of the other developments around town. And so I, I am periodically reminded relative to our storm cleanup, waterway cleanup, bringing parks back to life. Mini pitches being planned for Hannah Park, you know, all of the adversity that we have had over this last year, storm as well as pandemic kind of reminds me of a saying that I once heard from a, from a coach. And that is, you know, when, when the going gets tough, quite honestly, it ain't no hill for a climber. And I'm now convinced that Marion consists of a lot of mountain climbers, and that's just what we're doing. We're climbing the mountain. Getting better every day, every week, every month. So I was enthused by the observations of my friend as we took that short tour. The other thing that I would just add to everybody here, as well as the entire community, have a very happy and safe Fourth of July.
Thank you. For my comments, I'll start with just announcing and reminding everyone that beginning in July, we will be inviting the public back into these meetings to attend meetings in person. So that's beginning with the first meeting in July. And we'll continue to offer the Zoom option for those who wish to watch the meetings from home, but anyone wishing to comment or to address the council, we invite them to come here in person and attend the meetings in person. Will did mention we're starting office hours again. I've missed doing those office hours. We tried to do them by phone during the pandemic, then it's not quite the same. I think that all the council members really enjoy engaging with members of the public to be, we've always gone to where people are, such as farmers markets or the library. And it gives us an opportunity to answer questions, to be available to provide information, to take comments and direct them to the city staff to help people with issues and things that they need assistance with. And it's been very useful to us in the past, and I know I've appreciated it, and I think all council members do. And we're looking forward to getting back into that and doing those, those office hours on a weekly basis. Through September, we're going to start by having them weekly at the farmers markets, Toby Farmers Market, and I believe when they're, when we have the uptown market, we'll be, we'll be at the uptown market. So I would encourage everyone to stop by and see the council members, ask your questions. Give us your input. On the fireworks, I would just, you know, every time, every year at this time, we start to get comments from members of the public about doing something about the fireworks, you know, can't we stop it, you know? Just remind everyone that this is a state law, that the city has done whatever it can. And it's, it's the sale of fireworks is permitted under state law. And on the other side of that, people who do enjoy them, you know, I would just encourage everyone to be considerate of your neighbors and consider, just be, just consider other people and use them responsibly, enjoy yourselves, but you know, just be considerate of others as you do. We do have, we're in a situation of the city's undergoing a lot of change, and we're in a transition period. And I think with the change comes, you know, some anxiety and people, not everyone's happy with things that are happening. So I just encourage everyone to remember that we're all on the same team, and we all want to see Marion be the best that it can be. We're all working towards the same goals of making Marion a great place to live and do business, where everyone can have a great quality of life. And if we do have differences on things, you know, let's, let's continue to see the best in each other. Let's continue to work together. That's really the way to get, to get more done and to end up with positive results. We're not always going to agree on, on everything, but you know, when we see the best in each other, I think that, you know, we can get past any problems. We've proved, we've proved that in this last year, this very difficult year as a community, and we, we came through it, you know, as a shining example of how a community comes together and kind of showed the world what we're all about. And let's just continue that. I encourage all residents, all our city employees, all our city leaders to continue to work together collaboratively, cooperatively, with the best interests of Marion at heart and and continue to, to move the city forward and be the standout community that we, that we are. So thank you very much for joining us this evening. And we'll see you next time.